Members of parliament, Nalolo Town Council, welcome. Sombu Matende is my name from Local Government Service Commission.
Thank you. Clerk's office?
Good afternoon Chair and good afternoon Honorable Members. My name is Maxo Cheka from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you Chair. Good afternoon everyone. My name is Rachel Chilishick from the Office of the Clerk.
Good afternoon, Emmanuel Walia from the Office of the Clerk.
Thank you. Honorable Member Fubusakiri?
Thank you Chair. Nalolo Town Council, good afternoon and welcome. Kalobo Pavhuma is my name. I represent the people of Sakiri constituency. Keter in the copper belt.
Thank you Chair. Good afternoon and welcome, Nalolo County Councilor. I'm Honorable Dr. Ron Munza, Member of Parliament for Kaumwe constituency in the District of the Eastern Province. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Honorable Member Formitete joining us virtually. Honorable Member Formitete?
Chair, thank you so very much. And Nalolo, good afternoon and most welcome to your committee. I urge you to be careful, be precise as you are engaging in your committee. Chair, thank you very much.
Your name?
I wish you a good interaction.
Your name, Honorable? They want to know your good name.
And my name, Nalolo. Yes, my name is Mutele. Yes, you know.
Yeah, that is our great one. Honorable Mutele Mishek from Mitete. Thank you for continuing staying glued to the proceedings, Honorable Member. We value your council always. My name is Mishek Mutetwa Nyambwase, Member of Parliament for Chasifu constituency in Eastern Province. I'm privileged to chair this committee of yours. Once again, welcome. You can quickly take us through. You read the cause of the query, then action taken, or remedial measure, then action taken. Thank you very much. Yes, you can take us through.
Thank you Chair. Before I read through, I request that you accept additional, addendum, appendix 1, 2, and 3 to be attached to the report.
You're welcome. Just take us, give us the copies. We shall use them. How many copies have you made?
It's one, one Chair.
We want more so that members can be following. We'll be using them to, for reference, yeah. So they'll make copies?
Thank you so much. Okay, so Chair, our report begins from page 1. Management response under budget income and expenditure. The cause of query, Chair, goes on to page 2. Management wishes to submit that the positive variance of 3,300 was as a result of increased personal levy that was attributed to the newly recruited workers in the district. Action taken, Chair, is that the management wishes to submit that the local authority updated the database to include the new employees. The major measure, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that the database for personal levy is updated regularly. Under fees and charges, Chair, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the negative variance of 380,802 kwacha was due to non-compliance to pay the fees and charges by the members of the public. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority engaged and sensitized the public on the need to pay fees and charges to the council, even as they also are required to honor obligation to the traditional leadership. The major measure, Chair, management wishes to ensure that the, management will ensure that the sensitization of the general public on the importance of paying fees and charges is conducted regularly. Part 3, Chair, on the licenses, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the negative variance of 1,050 kwacha was due to non-compliance by the members of the public to pay for the licenses. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority engaged and sensitized the public on the need to pay the acquired licenses from the council on to legally trade in the district. The major measure, management will ensure that the sensitization of the general public on the importance of paying for licenses is conducted regularly. Under the levies, Chair, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the positive variance of 142,505 was due to overcorrection from two streams of revenue, thus timber and fish levy. There was high harvest that was anticipated in the time of budgeting. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority engaged and sensitized the public on the need to pay levies to the council, and the response was encouraging. The major measure, management will ensure that the sensitization of the general public on the importance of paying levies is conducted regularly and also continue updating the database as the payers in the district. Under payments, Chair, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the negative variance of 800 kwacha was due to non-compliance to pay the payments from the members of the public. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority engaged and sensitized the public on the need to pay and acquire payments from the council for the businesses they own in the district to, for them to legally trade. The major measure, management will ensure that the sensitization of the general public on the importance of paying payments is conducted regularly. Other receipts, Chair, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the positive variance of 577,297 was due to the contribution made to the Office of the Provincial Local Government Office from the local authorities in Western Province for holding of the Budget Performance Review Meetings. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority accounted for the funds and remitted to the PRGO. The major measure, Chair, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that all the monies received on behalf of PRGO are remitted to the user timely. Part 7 on Local Government Equalization Fund, cause of query, Chair, management wishes to submit that the negative variance of 2,543 was due to the deduction for Lasif and Zulawu that were made at source. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority accounted for the deduction funds and updated the ledgers accordingly. The major measure, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that all deductions for Lasif and Zulawu are accounted for and updated in the ledger accordingly. Part 8, Chair, under other grants, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the negative variance of 32,414 was due to less receipts of grant in lieu of rates from the Minister of Local Government and Road Development. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority engaged the Ministry of Local Government and Road Development requesting for funding. The major measure, management wishes to submit that the local authority will continue to engage the Ministry of Local Government for funding. Under appendix 1, Chair, there is evidence of the items that are raised. There's a letter to the Ministry of Local Government attached, the response from the ministry, and also the summary of the deductions at source. Number 2, Chair, failure to spend. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings on failure to spend 1,421,800 on operations and capital projects. Action taken, Chair, there's a table there which shows the amount opening balance, the amount spent, and then the current balance. Under operations, Chair, management wishes to submit that the local authority spent 118,177 on the statutory contribution for December 2023 and other operation costs. Under capital projects, Chair, management wishes to submit that the local authority spent 359,911 on construction of Abushon Block and on keep Zambe clean. The local authority intends to source funds, Chair, to top up on the balance amount so that we procure a bus. Rural water project, management wishes to submit that the local authority spent 2,996 on fuel and to facilitate movements for the water coordinator to check on the hand pump bohos in Nalolo district. There is spent balance of 12,870 is meant for the purchase of hand pump boho spares. The major measure, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that all monies are accounted for and the projects undertaken timely. Under appendix 2, Chair, we have attached the bank statements which is showing the payments that were made. Also expenditure ledgers attached, Chair, under appendix 2. And also, we have attached the completion certificates for the Abushon Block. And among these that are given now, there are some pictorial evidence for the same Abushon Block. The Chair, Anna Komar, on the council. A review of Nalolo, oh, sorry, this is a query, let me go to cause of query. Page 7, Chair, management response. Revenue correction and national support. Chair, this one is similar to the first part that we did?
Yes, you go to page 10. On deliverable targets, output, and achieved, not achieved, I mean.
Thank you Chair. On page 10, so I start from management response on page 11. Construction of events center. Cause of query, Chair, management wishes to submit that the event center could not be constructed because the land was not on title. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the process of acquiring titles is underway as the land was surveyed and the survey diagrams have been produced by the Ministry of Lands. However, with the intervention of the Ministry of Local Government and Road Development, we wish that this project program will be expedited as well submitted as requested by the Ministry of Security. Number 2, Chair, acquisition of the public bus. Management wishes to submit that the local authority could not procure a public bus due to insufficient funds. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority intends to source for some monies to top up on their variable funds so that we can procure the bus, Chair, in 2026. The funeral parlor, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the procurement of the funeral cottage was not done due to insufficient funds. Action taken, management wishes to submit that due to the insufficient funds of the, that the local authority decided to embark on one project, which is to procure a public bus. Under appendix 3, Chair, there are extractors of minutes to show that resource, that we go for one project, not all the projects. Then there's also letter to the Ministry of Lands over the title deeds and the survey diagrams, they are attached, Chair. The major measure, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that we adhere to the set deliverables of targets and outputs. Management of Local Government Equalization Fund, 20% capital projects. Under management response, Chair, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the cause of query was due to the fourth canopy that was received initially from the supplier and was retained. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the local authority engaged the supplier upon discovering that the canopy was not matching the specifications that were given. The canopy was consequently returned to the supplier and requested for another one that met the required specifications. Further engagements with the supplier revealed that the canopy with the required specification is not in stock and management has since demanded for a refund. The supplier has since, Chair, refunded and the deposit slips are shown under appendix 4. The major measure, management will ensure that before payment is done to suppliers and contractors, due diligence is done on an item or service to be procured. Crosscutting issues, Chair, under appendix 1, audit opinion. Management response, the major measure, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that laid down procedures and policies are adhered to when preparing the financial statements in order to continue having an qualified report in many years to come. Appendix 2, Chair, under budget, funding and expenditure. Management response, cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings on failure to spend the 1,421,800 on operations and on capital projects. Chair, this is similar to the other response we gave the previous page. With your permission, I move to appendix 6. On the unsupported payments. Thank you Chair. And under management response, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the cause of query on unsupported payments was a result of some documents not being attached to the payment vouchers at the time of audit. Action taken, management wishes to submit that all the documents have been attached and are ready for verification. Chair, there on appendix 5, payment vouchers and the receipts are attached. The major measure, management will ensure that all the documents are properly filed and kept under lock and key cabinets to avoid not attaching documents to the payment vouchers. Appendix 11, Chair, unacquitted payments, management response. Cause of query, Chair, management wishes to submit that the cause of query was that at the time of audit, payments which were made to the provincial law government office for budget meetings were not acquitted because these payments were done online and at the time of audit, no officer from provincial law government had come to Nalolo to have payments acquitted. Action taken, Chair, that management wishes to submit that the provincial law government office was engaged and all the payments have since been acquitted. Further, that the local authority has engaged the provincial law government office to use other accounts for the budget meetings contributions. Appendix 6, Chair, as the acquitted payment vouchers, also acquito sheets attached. The major measure, management will ensure that all the payments are acquitted on time. Appendix 12, Chair, under unaccounted for fuel. Management response, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the cause of query on unaccounted for fuel was as a result of some fuel disposal documents not being attached to the payment vouchers at the time of audit. Action taken, Chair, is that we wish to submit that all the fuel disposal documents have since been attached and are ready for verification. See appendix 7, payment vouchers with stores ledgers attached. And also the fuel statement is there from the filling station. Management, on the major measure, Chair, management will ensure that all the documents are properly filed and kept under lock and key cabinets to avoid not attaching documents to payment vouchers. Appendix 14, unaccounted for stores, cause of query, management wishes to submit that the cause of query on unaccounted for stores was as a result of some disposal documents not being attached to the payment vouchers at the time of audit. Action taken, management wishes to submit that all disposal documents have since been attached and are ready for verification. See appendix 8, Chair, where have attached payment vouchers with goods received not attached. And also where have attached the goods issued vouchers. The major measure, management will ensure that all the documents are properly filed and kept under lock and key cabinets and to avoid not attaching the documents to payment vouchers. Appendix 23, Chair, poor management of waste. Cause of query, management wishes to submit that the cause of the query is due to the use of unfenced dump site. Action taken, management wishes to submit that the dump site sits on the traditional land and the local authority has no title to the land. Therefore, management has continued to engage the traditional leadership on having the land on title so that when you have the land on title, Chair, we can source for some funding to build the warfares. Under appendix 9, Chair, there's a dump site, the site plan for the dump site attached. The extract of the minutes where we are processing the title, requesting for the title processes. And also security from the Ministry of Local Government where they encouraging us to submit those untitled properties so that they can facilitate the titling. The major measure, Chair, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that laid down procedure and processes in title acquisition are followed by continuously engaging with the traditional leadership. Appendix 32, Chair, failure to transfer funds to capital account. Cause of query, management acknowledges the auditor's findings on failure to transfer funds to capital account. Action taken, Chair, management wishes to submit that the local authority transferred the funds to the capital account. So under appendix 10, Chair, we have attached a bank statement which shows the transfers of the funds to the account. The major measure, management wishes to submit that the local authority will ensure that the transfer of funds to capital account is done on time. Conclusion, Chair, I wish to, I wish to submit that the, I wish to submit to the committee, Chair, that the major measures that have been submitted to the committee will be implemented and reviewed for further improvement. Submitted, Chair, for your deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Honorable Members, points of gratifications? Questions? Honorable Munza?
Thank you Chair. We go to page 5.
Witness, let's go to page 5.
Page 5 is about failure to spend. So management acknowledges the auditor's findings on failure to spend 1,421,800 on operations and capital projects, which is stated in the table that operations, they had 180,177 and the current balance is 0. Capital projects, current balance is 864. Rural water supply project, rural water project is 12,870. If we go to page 6, so the management wishes to submit that the local authority spent the 9,911 on construction of Abushon Block. The local authority intend to source up on 864,947. My point of gratification, I don't want to see. You have reserved 864,947 for, to procure a bus. So you're looking for top up funds to procure a bus. And I heard in your presentation, I think you said probably 2026. This, what is the budget for the bus? The amount of money that you want to source to top up on this 864,000? What is the budget? One. Two, I have seen on appendix 2, you have attached bank statement from January, January 1st, 2024 up to January. It's just for one month, okay. January 1st, 2024 to January 31st. Looking for the balance, this 864,947 in the bank statement, would DF show us proof that these funds are still sitting in the account? First we deal with those two.
Thank you very much. Council Secretary?
Thank you Chair. On the bus, the budget for the bus, Chair, when we are trying to find out, quoting quotations, the bus we intend to buy is 11,800. So look for the money. Then on the, we are trying to justify or show the payments that we have made through the account. I think the balance we have to show on the latest statement does not reach to the latest statement, this one. With your indulgence, Chair, we can make the latest statement available.
Honorable Munza? Yes, you have to make the latest statement available because this is a commitment on page 6 which we are trying to explain how the funds are going to be spent. And the balance, you have kept these funds, 864, waiting to top up to procure a bus. Then appendix, you said you have an addendum. But I want, appendix 2, appendix 2. But what we have, what we have? What is the appendix in a yellow file, in a yellow file? Is it the yellow file? This, Honorable Munza?
Okay. Okay, because I want to know, I want you to check the Abushon Block. The project, the Abushon Block. And the, we have known, you have provided a ledger on appendix 2 without supporting financial details in terms of payment vouchers to the contractor. They are not, they are not here.
Yes, the payment vouchers.
You've referred us to appendix 2 for this topic of, of failure to spend. And so we expect the evidence to be in the appendix 2. So the contractor, the contractor for the Abushon Block water supply project, also refuse bay. Total amount 153,641. No, no payment vouchers. Even, you just attached completion certificates for the two projects. Why?
Council Secretary?
I apologize Chair, but we have the box file here though. I think when photocopying, I think we did not attach the payment, but we can make them available. We have the copies here.
It is in that box file?
Yes.
You made only one or two payments?
We can make them available, Chair, there in this file.
Yes, forward them to Secretariat. Pick that file, box file. Okay, another question? Honorable Pavhuma?
Page eleven.
Page eleven.
Um. The query, construction of event center. On the inquiry here, Chair, they are telling us that they could not construct the event center because the land was not titled. And they've said management wishes to submit the process is underway as the land was surveyed and the survey diagrams have been produced by the Ministry of Lands, however, with intervention of the Ministry of Local Government and Law Development is with great hope that the titles will be acquired for all the council properties. And they are saying refer to the secular from the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. Uh. My first question here, before I proceed with other questions, I wanted to know when were they audited? When the Nalolo, Nalolo was audited, Chair?
Uh. Council Secretary, when were you audited?
Chair, September twenty twenty four.
September twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Yes, Honorable?
They were audited in September and the survey diagrams they are referring to. All the four, if I look at them. Uh. They were surveyed in July twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
Yes, and from that time, nothing has been happening. After being audited in September for the purpose of appearing before this committee on fifth September now is when they applied for the certificate of titles.
That is on appendix what?
The the extra, the extra appendix they've provided, which is written appendix one. So, Chair, I would like to find out from the witness, what have they been waiting from July twenty fifteen to date and the ministry did it, but did its part, I think after surveying in July twenty fifteen. In November, November second, twenty fifteen, they approved the diagrams. And they packed the documents waiting for the audit, twenty twenty three audit. Why did you have to wait? Then after the audit, then you submit for the title.
Council Secretary?
Thank you, Chair, I'll ask the director planning to answer that question.
Director planning?
Uh. Thank you very much, Chair. Uh. Indeed, on the survey diagrams. The survey was done quite some time back in twenty fifteen. And uh notwithstanding, we didn't receive those the survey diagrams uh in that year. Uh. What we can answer for is what we did uh when we had the survey diagrams, Chair. And so uh the letter the honorable member is referring to actually was a follow up because uh at some point, uh we are told to submit certain documents at the Ministry of Lands. And those documents were the same copies of the survey diagrams, offer letters and the gazette notice for the local authority. So that now, since the survey diagrams have already been produced, they assign us the titles. So the letter was a follow up. And so that is the action we are we are taking so that we can quickly acquire the titles to uh start the construction of the event center.
So when did you make the follow up?
Uh. I think it was early September.
Which year?
Twenty twenty four, the fifth September twenty twenty four.
From twenty fifteen.
Yes, Chair, uh like I've indicated that we can only answer from the period we assume the office. Uh. Of course, it's perpetual succession, but.
Yeah, but you must have gotten some information when you assuming the office. You looked at those things and then you asked why it has taken long, what 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 could have been the reasons?
So the reasons we are giving, Chair, was that the ministry was taking long, no wonder we made the follow up to uh find out where the process was. And then unfortunately, Chair, even up to now, we have not received a response to this letter. But then, like the CS has indicated in the minute, that the Ministry of Local Government has come in with an intervention. And we hope that upon submission of these broad numbers in that format which they have provided, I think, to all the local authorities, this process will be expedited.
Okay, but look, um councils, you can switch off your mic. Councils, when they're asking for variation at the ministry, they frequent the ministry. They frequent the ministry. So what makes you not to frequent the ministry, one very important thing like this one? Where you want to get the title so that at least you secure uh the place or you start the constructions. Some people before you, they start from twenty fifteen. You are also following suit, you submit in twenty in twenty twenty four September, fifth September, something like that. And you are quite up to now, how many months? If it was funding, you mean you are going to sit like that, waiting variations? Honorable Manza?
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh. Your witness is telling us that this was a follow up letter. When you draft a follow up letter, definitely I will know that it's a follow up letter, this was an application. So, okay, where is the substantive letter? So that we know that this was a follow up, where is it? Because you have found and the ministry, I think, also they wrote to you on thirteen December, requesting you to submit all properties that were not titled after the fifth September application. So where is the substantive letter? So for us to prove that indeed this was a follow up letter.
We 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 need, we apologize, we didn't carry the the original or the the first letter which was initially written.
Yeah. To adjourn for lunch. We continue at fourteen hours and I hereby suspend the immunity conferred on you. Go for lunch for an hour, we'll come back at fourteen hours. You may.
Should we leave the things or we can carry?